Good evening, everyone. I call this September 28, 2021, virtual administrative meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jamie Diaz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Jamie, and also to the entire Linda Stover and everyone at the Clerk's Office for National Voter Registration Day today. Thank you for your work, and everybody get registered. Your vote is your voice. So, moving on, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we have two. Item 3A, Vehicle Noise and Speed Enforcement Discussion, to be deferred to the October 12th meeting. And then the second one is Item 12A, Under Planning and Development Services, Illegal Dumping Partnership Update, to be deferred to the October 12th meeting. And a vote is required for the two changes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I will move to approve those changes to the agenda. I see Commissioner Casada seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Barboah. Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Oh, Commissioner O'Malley is excused this evening.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So those changes pass unanimously. So, moving on to proclamations. Commissioner Barboah will present Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
Sorry, just a second. I didn't have it up. There it is. So I'm very thankful and honored to read this off. Board of Commissioners sponsored by Commissioner Charlene Piscotti, Commissioner Stephen Michael Casada, Commissioner Debbie O'Malley, Commissioner Adrian Barboah, and Commissioner Walt Benson. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day replaced Columbus Day in 2019, a proposal in the making since the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People declares the right of indigenous peoples to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information. And whereas New Mexico is home to the Navajo Nation, three Apache nations, the Fort Sill Apache Tribe, the Hickorya Apache Nation, and the Mescalera Apache Tribe, and nineteen pueblos, Akama, Cochati, Asleta, Hemes, Laguna, Nambé, Okewinge, Picuris, Pawake, San Felipe, San de Fonzo, Sandia, Santa Ana, Santa Clara, Santo Domingo, Taos, Tusuki, Zia, and Zuni. And whereas indigenous peoples have lived on the lands of Bernalillo County over 10,000 years, farming with the waters of the Rio Grande, and that Bernalillo County is built on these traditional homelands and the original inhabitants of the Americas. And whereas the culture, identity, and history of indigenous peoples in Bernalillo County have been assailed through centuries of war, colonization, and enslavement, from the Tewa War to the Spanish Missions and the Albuquerque Indian School. And whereas indigenous people have contributed without adequate consideration to our community for generations through knowledge, philosophy, agriculture, technology, science, and the arts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourages all residents of the county to recognize the thriving contributions and communities of indigenous people in Bernalillo County and everywhere done this 28th day of September 2021 in Bernalillo County, state of New Mexico.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Would anyone like to comment on that? Well, I think it's very important. I think you, I thought it was interesting just hearing that background and history and, you know, really getting a sense of why this is an important holiday, especially here for us. So, moving on. I will be doing the next acknowledgement. It's the Afghan Refugee Acknowledgement. The Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge community support of Afghan refugees, acknowledging that over 50,000 Afghan people have been evacuated to the United States in the past months since the fall of the Islamic Republic of Afghanistan, and 200 refugees are expected to settle in Bernalillo County. And acknowledging that Bernalillo County is supportive and welcoming to all refugees from around the world as proclaimed in Administrative Resolution Number 2020-2. And members of our community have supported the arrival of refugees for many years. And acknowledging that groups like Lutheran Family Services have provided services like case management, job readiness, and English language tutoring for Afghan immigrants since 2013, helping over 330 people settle in Bernalillo County. And acknowledging that a surge of volunteers has arisen, multiplying the number of trainee volunteers by 10 times at Lutheran Family Services last monthly training. And hearing from families willing to home refugees from truth or consequences to Farmington. And acknowledging that support is still required, including more housing partnerships, health clinics for refugees who do not qualify for Medicaid, and donations of passes to the biopark and museums for refugees to enjoy their welcome to the community. And acknowledging that Afghan people are thriving members of the Bernalillo County community, working in all walks of life, from truck drivers to engineers, supported by the Afghan Society of New Mexico, who give back to our community every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners thanks the entire community for its support of the recent Afghan refugees and welcomes them into Bernalillo County, done this 28th day of September 2021 in Bernalillo County, state of New Mexico, and signed by all the Commissioners. And I know we have in the meeting Fareed Sharifi. Oh, there you are. I know you wanted to say a few words. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all. And Madam Chair yourself for sponsoring this acknowledgement. And I'm really looking forward to working with Bernalillo County and all the citizens here to welcome our new guests into our communities and help them put their lives together and resettle here in our wonderful state. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the work that you do. And Fareed, can you tell us again your title in the agency you're with?
Absolutely. My apologies on that. So, yeah, again, my name is Fareed Sharifi, and I'm with Lutheran Family Services. I'm the Programs Director for the Refugee Resettlement. And again, this may be repetitive, but I guess we are the only refugee resettlement agency for the entire state of New Mexico. And I'm proud to share with you all that just about 10 days ago, we opened up our second site in Los Cruces. So now we officially have two resettlement sites for all refugees in New Mexico. And it's also part of Lutheran Family Services.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Questions for Fareed or any comments? Commissioner Barboah.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Fareed. I was on a listening session earlier with Fareed and the Immigrant Law Center and lots of other stakeholders that are, and I just, and in reaching out, Commissioner Piscotti and I actually had a meeting with some other partners. And I guess it was new for me to learn, right, that because of the urgency in getting folks out of Afghanistan, that they will not have, like, what's typical refugee status. And so I, and there's lots more to the whole situation that is going to require creativity and really be thinking of how we, you know, adjust and move resources to make sure that folks that are already traumatized can have a safer, softer landing when they, that do arrive here. So, thank you Fareed for being here. And I look forward to partnership and being proactive and thinking about how we can, yeah, best be good neighbors and welcome our guests, as you said.
Thank you so much for your kind words, and I'm definitely very excited and looking forward to working with you all and our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anybody out there is listening and they, if they want to connect with Fareed or Lutheran Family Services, maybe the easiest way to be, would be to just shoot me an email at district5@burnco.gov, and I can pass that on if there's a way that you want to help or need more information. So, so thank you very much. Thanks, Fareed, for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to board and committee appointments. The first one is someone that I'm sponsoring. So I will make a motion to approve the appointment of Krista Bonfantine to the Estancia Basin Water Planning Committee, representing the Municipal Developer Utility Group. And if you look through the agenda packet and saw Krista's resume, you'll see why she is perfect for this. She has the education and the experience. So, I move to approve. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Benson. All in favor? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Hi, I am here. I got kicked out for some reason. I'm back.
Oh, we see you.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So that passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, if I can just, for the record, get clarification, who seconded?
It was Commissioner Benson.
Thank you.
I know he beat out Commissioner Casada by that much. I saw those hands go up almost at the same time, but I had to pick the first one, so. But thank you for clarifying that. So, Youth Sports Commission appointment. Commissioner Benson, take it away. Who's your person?
Madam Chair, my person is Mr. John Dufay. And I'd like to nominate and make a motion to reappoint him to the Sports Commission, the Youth Sports Commission. He's, the Youth Sports Commission is doing good work. We've got a good team there, working, trying to engage the youth in Bernalillo County and Albuquerque. And, you know, sports is a great way to engage a lot of kids. Kept me out of a lot of trouble when I was growing up. But John has spent his, the majority of his professional career at APS as the managing all of the facilities and a pretty brilliant guy. So I want to thank him for his service here on this commission and nominate him for another term.
Well, I'll just jump in and second that. So, all in favor? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. So congratulations to our new appointee and reappointee. So, moving on, public comment and communications. Before, let's see, before we hear public comment, we will proceed with communications items. So first up is economic development. Albuquerque Economic Development Update. And Marcos or Meiling?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the Commission. The Economic Development Staff wants to present for information a presentation from Albuquerque Economic Development by AED President and CEO Danielle Casey, where she'll describe the organization's strategic plan and economic development efforts. As you know, she has met with all of you and has recently completed a strategic plan that will provide immediate next steps and what the implementation is. So I'm excited for you guys to hear this. It's, I feel like it's a good plan and it's going to do well for both Albuquerque and the region. So Danielle, I believe you're on. There she is. I will hand this over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. It's a pleasure to be here, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm going to share my screen with some slides. Hopefully that'll work out well. And, all right. Please let me know if you have any problems seeing that, but we should be good. Wonderful. All right. I'm not getting any head confusion or I'm not seeing it. So with that, I'm going to roll through. It is a tremendous honor to be here. It's been wonderful to meet each and every one of you. Would have preferred in person, but we will get there someday. It'll happen. I'm sure of it. I actually got here last October on Halloween, so it's been quite an interesting year, to say the least. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep to a very reasonable amount of time tonight so you can hit me with any questions or comments or suggestions that you have. So I entitled this presentation Building a Regional Economy because that's really what AED does and why we exist. And I'm going to get into that quite a bit and touch on all of the items that the Economic Development Director mentioned. So, AED, for anyone watching or listening that may not be aware, because I was a little surprised that there were folks that weren't aware, we support the entire metro area, the metropolitan statistical area. And a big reason we do this is because, you know, economies don't stop at borders. They work among labor markets, labor sheds. They work along interconnected roadways and communities that work together. I don't think there's any company that's located in Bernalillo County that is said will only hire people that live within this border area. As long as they're within that labor shed and wanting to work with them, they will interact. And obviously, we have institutions that serve across these borders as well. So very important to think about, and we really do see that we have impact and connectivity as well to Los Alamos and Santa Fe. So I like, I like to start with that and remind people that, you know, we are really trying to serve a greater region. And within that region, there are urban areas and rural areas. A little bit on my background, I spent the bulk of my career in economic development actually on the local government side in Arizona. So my first decade in economic development was in a very, very rural startup community that was sandwiched between two tribal communities that had tons and tons of growth. If you all can imagine, we did 800 single-family permits over a card table in a double-wide trailer in one month. So, yeah, kind of, kind of an intense experience there. And then I went and worked in Scottsdale running economic development with, and then with a regional organization in Sacramento before having the awesome opportunity to come to this wonderful, wonderful community and state. So a little bit about our impact over the years. We've been around a long time. AED has got some deep roots. It became a membership organization back in 92, but it spawned out of different iterations through the chamber back in the 1960s. And to the best that we can count over that period of time, knowing we were consolidating paper copies, things that were disintegrating, and real spreadsheets. You know, 1,400 businesses just in the last decade or so. We've helped assist 55 or more firms just since 2011. And obviously, that number goes up all the time. One of the things we didn't have before I came on board this year, and I thought it was very, very important, I kept getting asked and told, AED doesn't really do a great job talking about what it does and its impact to the community. So we brought onboard an economic impact model so that we could articulate this information better. And while, while I certainly understand for some folks, these models are just a bunch of numbers, they are built with national data inputs by economists have done, who have done this for years and years. And models like this are what state incentive programs are based on. So I, you know, and we always err on the conservative side. So all of the projects just from 2021 that you'll see listed on the right that we have worked on and had a, I like, I like to call it a material influence on. So in some way, shape, or form, AED either caused it to happen or was very significant in its decision going forward and instrumental in the work. This means after three years of the announcements they've made, these are the results that you and the community will see in terms of impact. 654 newer retained jobs and an additional 746 spin-out jobs. And that's really important because these base industry jobs that we bring and grow to the community also induce and drive the growth of additional service jobs from, you know, dentists to accountants to, you know, your local friendly restaurant host or hostess. So all of those things are impacted by net new wealth being brought into an economy. So we're really, really proud of these numbers, especially in a year like COVID. In fact, our, our project numbers and leads numbers that we are seeing this year are right up there with 2019, which was a record year. So I'll get in just a minute as to why that's wonderful, but we've not, now got to work on competitiveness issues. We can respond to all the deals in the world, as your own economic development team knows, but we're not going to win if we don't also work on the issues as to why we're not winning them. As my, I think, my dad was a military guy and the, you know, you know, second place is first loser, as he would say. It's a little tough. But, you know, these tradeable sector jobs are really important, right? When you look at numbers like national multipliers, and this comes from the Economic Policy Institute, you know, things like durable manufacturing and IT jobs, they are creating a demand for a much higher number of additional jobs in the, in the community. And I like to share this with folks, location quotients. It's just a fancy economic development term that really means your concentration of positions in a certain occupation as compared to the national average. So being high or low could be a good or bad thing, depending, right? And, and so one of the things that we are working on, and why do we want to diversify the economy? Well, our government number is really high. And no, as a career government professional, truly, I, I would never say that we need less government or less folks. We need more private sector added to our, our community and our markets. We need a really good balance. So, so this is, this is something that we're looking at and going, okay, well, you know, clearly we are also well below the national average in things like manufacturing and information. So definitely an area of focus and growth. And this is kind of the cornerstone of why we need strategic planning. And, and so again, a little bit of an homage on us back to, you know, again, why are we regional? And how does this work? So because Bernalillo County is so large, the numbers are a little different than you'd see in a rural community. When you look at, you know, like a Las Lunas, you know, 16% of their folks only live and work in their communities. So we are all interconnected completely every day. And you all know that much better than I do or just as well as anyone else. So, you know, where your folks who live in the county are employed, they're going all over the place. So some of the building blocks of economic development and the work with, that we do, because all the time I still talk to people and they go, well, okay, cool. What do you do? Are you a chamber? Are you not a chamber? What do you do? What do they do? And, and, you know, it's, it's a little complicated, but think of us as the marketing arm of the region and almost the sales arm of the region, except I don't have a widget, right? I'm selling the larger community and the benefit to business for being here. Not, not always an easy thing, right, for any community? So we work on things like identifying our strengths and weaknesses. We also have to figure out what our weaknesses are so we can work on them. We work on very, very data-driven value propositions. We work on brand development. And then we are out there prospecting companies and helping them with their development and location selection. So from an AED standpoint, let's get a little more specific into what we do on a day-to-day basis and what we have traditionally done. And then I'll get into talking about our strategic plan. But, you know, we work on a lot of research and labor analytics. We help on site selection support. So a company or really their advisor will call and go, oh, we're kind of looking at New Mexico or the greater Albuquerque metro area. We're also looking at, you know, Texas and Boise and these other markets. Tell us about your community. Tell us about your advantages and help us find a location in the region. Again, gets very complex, very fast. We can often spend between 15 and 30 hours responding to one client request, depending on how detailed it is. But we also do marketing and cold lead generation, work on talent attraction, workforce strategies, toolkit development, how do we become more competitive, and existing business growth and support. And we also do membership engagement and programming. Although what I'm working to do with AED, as, as folks who have looked at our strategy have seen is, make it a much more mission-driven organization and engage my investors and my board members on actually driving the appropriate change as opposed to, I don't want us to be an organization that just holds meetings to hold meetings and really boring governance meetings. I want to put people to work. So, so there are some complimentary and unique roles. So again, when I hear people that aren't as familiar, because they haven't spent time in the economic development world, you know, okay, well, why do you exist? And why does this other group exist? There is a very, very critical and key role for all the economic development organizations we have. And I will say one, just a harsh truth in our market and our state is, overall, we are very, the funding for economic development at a state level and on down is very challenged. So, you know, and thinking about those investments is really critical. AED itself, even right now, is about half of the budget and about maybe two-thirds of the staff side of any comparably sized regional EDO that I've seen in the country. So we're hitting above our weight class, but we need to, we need to work on that belt a little bit. But again, we work with our state-level partners. We work within the region, and then we work with local county and city governments who, again, my history and experience is knowing that without the land use planning and the local governance decisions permitting and zoning, you know, anything I do is dead in the water if we aren't working together in a really, really aligned way. And if we understand what the communities want and different community, even though we represent a whole region, there are going to be different priorities and goals within communities in that region. And so it's key for us to understand as well. And then, and then help market and support that. And obviously, at the state level, they're managing state incentives and state-level strategy and really also thinking about rural communities. Couple of the things, I'm going to talk to you about some quick resources and then wrap up with our strategy. But some of the cool things that we do have in our coffers that's really nice and I think important for folks to be aware of are things that, and this is wonderful because your economic development team doesn't have to duplicate these resources and tools. We will offer the support and do it for you and be a partner. So thinking about economic impact analysis, we can do metro comparisons. Again, complex way of saying, we can tell a business in general, if they have 500 employees in a certain amount of space, what those average costs are going to be in our market compared to another market. This is important because rather than just saying, well, let's get them the maximum incentive that's legally possible and hopefully they'll come here, we can actually analyze where the gap is and to what level we're truly competitive or not competitive, and then look for different ways to solve those problems if they are, in fact, you know, the right company and the right business for our community. So again, a lot of marketing, web, video presence. We have a lot of really cool GIS-based tools and tours. This is really important for painting a picture to site selection consultants and folks not familiar with the market as to what our assets are. We can get very, very granular on labor analytics and again, on prospecting tools. So, and I just throw the value down there because that's what a lot of these things would cost if you had to duplicate them on your own. So we're doing that for you. We've done some really, and so think about that, you know, also as you think about investments and support and partnership. We worked this year to do, if you haven't seen this talent report, this was a really fun partnership we did with CBRE because at the end of the day, commercial real estate brokers really believe other commercial other commercial real estate brokers because they stand behind their data and analytics. So we joined forces, shared all of our resources and it's, it's a really wonderful picture of talent and industry in our region. And some of our employers are already using this report as a way to actually market to future talent. So that's something we're going to continue to grow and leverage. Won't dig into it now, but we have a really fun, wonderful online sites database for, for prospective employers and site selection consultants. You can check it out online anytime, but it's free for anyone to list properties. So not just commercial brokers, but if you have property that the, the county is looking to, you know, sell or that is available for business interests, maybe not actively marketed but available, we can have it listed there so we know it's something that should be considered for an opportunity. So on to this strategic plan. So you can find it online. And by the way, big, big, big thank you to the county for being a supporter and helping us get this done. Without your support, it wouldn't have happened. And it is very critical because the harsh reality is AED did not have a formal strategic plan when I, when I came on board and I went, well, how do you report to your investors and your communities and partners as to whether you're moving the needle or, and how are you accountable to some of those things? And I think AED has had such a long, strong history. It's, it's been blessed with tremendous support, but I'm also very, very big on metrics and transparency. And I think it goes back to my government days. So tell you just a little bit about the process we went through. It was extensive. Started at the end of January, raised some funds, had kickoff meetings. And we had many, many touch points with community members, interviewed dozens and dozens of business leaders, set up a task force to help guide us through the process and, and gather input. And, and we had two different legs to our consulting team. One was a leader who has established regional economic development organizations around the country and done strategic planning consulting. And, and she conducted our SWOT analysis, that strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats thing, which is really what, how the community sees itself, not what the consultant thinks of the community. They're gathering feedback. And then the other half was a site selection consulting firm. So whether we like their data or not, it's the data they use to evaluate markets. So it's really important to look at things through a lens of how you're being evaluated when you don't even know. So with that, this is our highest level summary card. You can certainly download the report and I'm going to point out a couple of key critical things and then our big next steps. Key critical thing is first, we were looking at our market and thinking, all right, if, if in five years, we've actually affected the economy in a way that's a greater than it's just going to do on its own, how can we measure that and track that? And so we looked at a lot of different indicators and we finally settled on one that is, that is very simple, but I think very, very meaningful. We looked at all of the markets in the country between half a million and a million in population. And we said, okay, cool. Compared to all of those, there's about seventy of them. Where do we rank in job growth over the past five years? And we rank in the bottom quartile currently. Now, if we do nothing and our competitors do nothing, we're projected to get maybe to that midpoint, maybe do about a one point three in the next five years. We would like to affect that in a positive way that drives things forward faster than it will happen on its own. So we would like to be in that top quartile in five years. Just, just a little bit of a, kind of a funny aside. I think it was back in nineteen eighty-eight, I found a really old hand typed report in AED's archives. While I was cleaning up some stuff and they were really panicked in nineteen eighty-eight because they had gone from seven percent job growth in nineteen eighty-four to two percent in nineteen eighty-eight. And we are certainly not in a better position today, looking at our last five years. But this is designed to affect that and we're going to be moving it forward in a very, very significant way. We also updated our mission statement. Our previous mission statement talked about AED's mission to attract and grow jobs to the region. And my comment to that was that is one of the things we do. It is not why we do it. So I feel very passionately about the end of that statement, which says that we are working to create a prosperous, diverse and inclusive economy to elevate the standard of living for all. That is not an easy thing to do. It can take a very long time and, and there's a lot of different inputs that are affecting that. Certainly many, many things that are not under AED's direct purview, but we need to be contributing to that. And so to me, it's, that's when I say a mission-driven organization as opposed to activity-based. So there are many pieces in here in terms of what we're going to be doing. But as, as, as your economic development director mentioned, we have some immediate next steps. And we've been very, very busy this summer. And the first big bucket before we can start doing cold lead generation and really launching very, very strategic target industry outreach and doing all of these things, we have to right-size our organization. So we are looking at a couple of things. One is transitioning AED. If, if you're not aware, we are currently a five oh one C six, which is similar to a chamber in terms of a nonprofit setup. Really the best practices set up across the country for regional economic development organizations is a C-three charitable organization for a number of reasons. So we are currently exploring a transition and have set up a task force to shift AED to a five oh one C-three. And one of the big key pieces in that, from my perspective and that we're talking to the board about is, I really also truly believe if we, if we see our, if we, if we agree and believe and have consensus that being a regional organization makes sense and regional economic development makes sense, then we need to be a true public-private partnership and also give our sec, public sector partners a meaningful seat at the table in being engaged in and helping drive these initiatives forward. So we are exploring what that can mean in this new governance structure for AED. So I don't have the answers right now, but we are working very hard on that. We're actually having the first board retreat of AED. Maybe not ever, I haven't been around for the whole, since the nineteen-sixties, obviously. But, but in terms of the memory of our current board leadership and chair, we've not had a retreat in the past. So this is going to be very meaningful work and that's happening tomorrow night and all day Thursday this week. We're also working on a naming refresh because our name, for one, it's super confusing. I get calls all the time from people thinking I work for the city. Nothing against the city, but we need to distinguish how our roles are unique and also express that regional work. So we're working on a naming refresh. We're going to unveil a recommended name for board approval and a new logo treatment on Thursday. So stay tuned. And, and if, if they give that a nod, we'll be rolling it out at the end of the year. And, and again, so a lot of other things, we've also been working on a fundraising feasibility study. So kind of last but not least, we also instituted quarterly reports this year that did not exist in the past. So this way, if you really want to know what AED is up to, who we've been working with, different activity we've had and how that tracks to our strategic plan or our annual action and implementation plan, we produce these within thirty days at the end of each quarter now. And they're on our website for anyone to see. So again, I, I truly believe a higher and very unique and different level of transparency than, than we've put out there in the past. Not that we were trying to not be transparent, but we're taking extra steps now. And with that, little list of our board of directors, if anyone is curious. And I will pause and, and I'll close the slides unless you want me to go back to them. And I would be thrilled to take any questions and thank you for your time.
I see Commissioner Casada has got his hand up already.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Danielle for that information. So I see that this is economic development, not really economic redevelopment, which means that they're two different things for me. So I do have some questions. Do you guys look at infrastructure? That wasn't on your list, but it's something that's really important to my district. The, the reason why a lot of the area doesn't grow is because of access, frontage roads off the freeway. Do you meet with other elected officials? Do you meet with the state to help us advocate for, you know, proper infrastructure? And, and I'm going to talk about what development means to me and my district. I don't know if you've been up in my district on the Southwest Mesa, but we have Unser Boulevard. We have Ninety-Eighth Street, Ninety-Eighth Street. And on those streets, on the Southwest Mesa where, when they put in development, they put in lots for businesses, small businesses, different kind of economic development opportunities. And so we're about twenty years into developing the Southwest Mesa and those are empty lots. They have tumbleweeds on them. And if you go up West Central, it, it, it has been historically through the city, been kind of redlined for development. They make it very difficult, more than any other area to, to put in businesses, to put in those sorts of things. I'm going to hit you with a bunch of things. And then do you also advocate for, for districts like mine that are all just rooftops and saying, these are big business opportunities, these are places for your business to be successful? Some of the things that we did is, you know, we really had to advocate to even just open that Deons on the corner of Coors and Central, which is a local, you know, corporation that has done very well. And they were like, eh, well, you know, our, our economic study says, you know? And I'm like, you're selling pizza, dude. We, we eat pizza, man. And so finally they opened the Deons and they found that that's the number one Deons in the state of New Mexico. The McDonald's up here on Ninety-Eighth is like the number one McDonald's in the region. You know, we are, we are a desert when it comes to jobs and economic development. I'm all for redevelopment. I'm all for looking at the city and saying, hey, we could do better in these areas. But for me, my fight is development period, first development, first time development is something that I'm hoping that your organization could help me in my district to, you know, further that opportunity. Historically, one side of the river developed and, and the other side of the river, they call sprawl. I'm only nine miles from the center of the city and yet I'm called sprawl, which I'm always confused about that statement. But historically though, and I, and I'm speaking, you know, always about how we're historically neglected because the city kind of grew to the mountains. Well, they're at a room now. And so they are coming my way, whether people like it or not. And I'm just always looking for champions to help me bring data and, and to help me fight for, you know, that proper opportunities for my district. So I know I just gave you a mouthful. I wrote it all down. I tried to make it as short as I possibly could, but could you hit on whatever you can remember?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, if I could go first and then Danielle can finish. Because I kind of want to set the stage on why Danielle's background and experience in the partnership going forward with the county is going to be so critical. So typically in economic development, there's three components. There's the marketing, there's the, the deal-making and then there's the delivery. And Danielle is really the marketing and the deal-making. I'm your delivery. And so we deliver when Danielle comes to us, she says, hey, we need, we're looking at X, Y and Z. And so, but prior to any of that, there are conversations, which was part of the strategic plan, which the county was very much involved in, where we would say, here's district two, here's what's, here's what's going on here and here's what we need to do. And Danielle will go out and do the research and do all of those things to identify those types of companies and industries that would, that are looking for those types of areas. And then we would, as your economic development team, deliver those sites. So what's really great about Danielle is she comes from that local government perspective. She knows what I'm dealing with from my seat, not only just dealing with the commission and the local, and the politics of it, but she comes from the, understanding the function of also the state and the city. And so bringing that all together is what's really critical. And I, and I say this very delicately, it's something that we've been missing in economic development in our region. Because everybody was trying to do everything and nobody understood their roles and, and really played on their strengths. And Danielle understands her strengths and she understands what the county also has as far as our strengths. So, so yes, so are we looking at development and redevelopment? Absolutely, all day, every day because we want to use existing infrastructure. It's cheaper on businesses and it's better for the community and it's better for, for job creation. And, and rooftops, creating jobs closer to rooftops makes less commute time. So obviously looking at a lot of those things. I'll hand it over to you Danielle to finish.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, she did such a great job. It's like, it's awesome. I'll, I'll just add to that, you know, and obviously a strategic plan is a pretty, pretty in-depth document, but there is absolutely information in there about also partnering with our regional COG, with the mid-region council of governments so that we can think about planning. There, there are mentions in there about the criticality of thinking about delivery of infrastructure. So one of the things I, I think to your point that we are looking at on a regional basis even is, all right, we've got less than a two percent vacancy rate for industrial property. So again, all of these great opportunities that are coming to us, where are we going to put them? How do we facilitate conversations? And again, think about all of the locational opportunities and how we can work with communities. And, and as, as Director Amiho said, you know, you are delivering the infrastructure and all of those things, but we also need to work with you to properly catalog and understand what you want to see in those areas as a community and then market them and bring those opportunities in. And a lot of that is the very extensive data and research. I'll tell you, I'm spending a lot of time, a decade in a small community. I did a heck of a lot of retail marketing and, and retail chasing as well. All of those things are important. We, we do focus on base industry jobs at AED, but we can also support our community partners on research and data across all of those lines. So yeah, very critical things without infrastructure and transportation access, it's really hard to bring companies to a community. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. I saw Commissioner Benson's hand go up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you, Madam Casey or Ms. Casey for your presentation here. Can you remind me, I went to your, the rollout of your strategic plan and it was great. It was exciting. I'm glad you're the, the person in that seat. I think there's a lot of energy going forward here, but there was a few things that stood out to me. And I don't know if the other commissioners have heard it, but what was the, what was the business friendliness rating of Albuquerque or New Mexico?
Well, Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner, good question. There were a couple of different angles on that. So one was in our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. Again, what people in our own community said, and by far, it was not a good response. Big concerns in terms of the business friendliness, real and perceived. Now, I think there's, there's always different lines of a story to tell in there and we have to do a better job at telling proactive stories. But also looking from a site selection perspective, there are, what was very interesting is when they dissected all the information in the community and, and I keep reminding folks because we've had a few people confused and they looked at the strategy, they go, well, that, that data is not quite accurate. And I said, and I'll say, well, but you're thinking about where we rank nationally. What we did in our strategic plan is had our consultants look at who are our top competitors? Because it doesn't matter if our weather is better than Boston, if we're not competing with Boston. You know, and it, and it doesn't matter if we're, we're more competitive from a business standpoint than New York because we're not competing with New York. There's very different reasons people would go to in New York. So we looked at, and we asked our consultants to pick the top ten markets in their mind, based on their experience, based on our private experience and knowing who we were stacked up against. And so it was very interesting because in many of the rankings, not only business friendliness, but other ways, we stacked up average or a little bit lower. So, you know, what we have to do is bump all of those issues, not just our business friendliness, which no, does not have a great reputation. But that as well as all these other factors, that the one that I thought was most interesting was I kept surveying people at the beginning of the year and going, what do you think are our best assets? So this is like maybe even a story I told at the unveiling. And I kept getting, you know, in responses to people with like online live polls, trying to, trying to engage people during COVID is tough, right? But I kept getting, well, the weather is great and we don't have earthquakes. But when our consultants looked at that and stacked us up against our competitors and they do this like, I'm probably exaggerating, but a sixty-two point ranking of all the different factors. They said, you're like right in the middle compared to all your competitors. So that's not your best asset. Maybe your best asset is the fact that your innovation and the research and things happening here are off the hook compared to any other market you're looking at. So let's think about distinguishing ourselves in those ways. But we also need to put a very, very big laser eye on the competitiveness issues in our market. We have to think about talent. We, our demographics are aging. We're getting older, people are retiring and we're not bringing in or keeping new younger talent. Very critical issue, right? And talent's probably the number one. So I could go on, obviously, but I, I hope I answered your question.
Kind of, kind of. The, I, what stood out with the consultants, I think were, you know, our reputation is not being friendly, but they put a number to it. I just can't remember what that was. I think we're, you know, our reputation is not being friendly, but they put a number to it. I, I just can't remember what that was. Um, but it wa- it was surprising and really my, my real question for you is. People respond to incentives and if, uh, whatever you're incentivizing, that's what's going to grow. And, uh. Our business hasn't been growing and our population hasn't been growing. I mean, it grew like the, the census was disappointing. We saw like. The two percent growth in the state, um, which is on par with the rest of the nation. But it's way below par with any of the surrounding states around us. And so, um, if we can incentivize. Business and, and jobs and a, a strong economy. And if we can incentivize that correctly, then we'll see it and everybody will benefit. And then our children, we won't have to be afraid of our children moving to go look for jobs when they're of age. So my question is, um, and you could hear from Mr., uh, Vice Chair Casada. We're all vested in this. What can we do as a commission to, to help incentivize this? And help AED and you do what you want to do?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I would say sink resources into shovel-ready sites. Getting available facilities under construction and underway. Talked to a commercial real estate agent. I mean, we're, we're looking at the whole region. And right now, based on how quickly things are being absorbed, we may not have, with current plans in place, if we don't get new. Product under development, we may not have any available industrial space for two years. Wow. So there's, you know, no manufacturing, no new development. I would say invest in that. So infrastructure shovel-ready sites, development opportunities, proactively, not a. Right now, some of our programs are really designed more to, we have to know who the end user is. So thinking about public-private partnerships and how we can, how we can accelerate that. And again, talent-related issues. So we are going to be doing an extreme amount of work. Connecting businesses with higher ed institutions, because we need to be thinking about what is the talent that they're going to need in five years. We do a tremendous job today at the, at the community college level. Um, you know, CNM has a wonderful reputation for, if a company comes in and says, we need X, Y, Z, they can stand things up pretty quickly. Sometimes it's a little late. You have to be able to show that you already have the talent pipeline and you're developing it. You know, ahead of time, so you can predict their needs. So those are, you know, if I had to pick the top two, those would be my top two right now.
Commissioner, Madam Chair, just, just for Elias, just for your information, Elias and Enrico and I. We talk weekly about different sites and what we need to do to facilitate any type of development. Um, in the county. So we, I mean, you can hear it from Amazon or any other developer. How quickly we have moved to get sites ready and permitted. Um, and so the whole team gets involved and it's a hands-on, every, you know, all hands on deck approach. When we, when we're looking at getting something done as far as economic development or development. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barbola.
You, Madam Chair and Commissioner, thank you Danielle for this great presentation. I just had a question and I was looking and I probably received the report. But, um, when you mentioned stakeholders and those multiple times where, um, sort of community input. Who are the stakeholders? Um, and, and how did, yeah, just.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner, we inner, our consultants interviewed. Close to a hundred different, uh, business and industry leaders, folks around the community. Um, your, uh, your wonderful county manager and then also economic development team actually served on a task force. So they were high-level advisors to us throughout the process, which, what, what was great about that is as our consultants. Went through the process of discovery, they brought that information back to that task force multiple times. So folks could vet the information and, and review it. So that was very key. We had a lot of folks on our board, which, you know, and again, our, our board. Represents a very, very diverse business community as well.
Thank you. And I guess I just wondered, I was thinking of like, um, young people, people that are, might be working. Like when you talk about talent, like if we are, if, if you all are in this evaluation or process, thinking about how to best do it. Are we talking to young people and how we meet their needs?
Well, uh, Commissioner, I, I can tell you that our, one of our consultant recommendations. In the, in the strategy that will take us a little bit to get to, but I think is going to be very critical. Is at some point during the deployment and knowing, you know, a strategic plan, if, if I could do everything in year one, I would, but. Um, but is setting up some youth councils and spending time talking to young people about, you know, their vision for the future. And how do we engage them and understanding and, 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 and knowing how to connect with companies in our region? Sometimes there's even that awareness. So absolutely connecting with youth and, 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 uh. Understanding what their vision is for the community and really what they want to see. In greater Albuquerque and Bernalillo County be long-term is going to be very critical.
Thanks Danielle. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you so much Danielle. Uh, you always give such a, a great enthusiastic presentation and I think we're all fired up now to. To get some economic development going. So thank you so much. And, um, that's great that you have the materials on the website. Is it just ABQ.org?
Ye- yes, uh, Madam Chair, I know it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a pretty significant URL. I, I figure if I really have to raise money, maybe I'd have to sell that someday, but I, I don't think I'm going to let go of it.
Good for you.
I, we, we must have gotten it, you know, when the, when, when, uh, when AOL was just still doing dial-up is, is, is my guess. But i- it's a tremendous pleasure and, uh, and I just thank you all. And I, and I would like if I, if I could just add. Uh, again, your economic development department has a tremendous reputation of very, very positive. It was actually one of the reasons, and I've said this many times, that I took this position. Because I knew people who had worked in this market before through my economic development channels. And they spoke so highly of your economic development director and said, oh, you will love working with her. She is an ace and knows her stuff. I was like, okay, I can do this. So now it's a, it's a tremendous pleasure and we're really excited to. Uh, to really ramp up the work we've done and, and again, shift how we approach this so we can be more impactful.
Thank you very much. And I think I speak for everyone when I say that, yes, we, we very much appreciate Mei Ling and Marco. So, thank you. Yeah. So upward and onward. And so moving on to our next presentation under communications. We have Code of Conduct Review Board and Compliance Office update with Robert Kidd and the Code of Conduct Chair to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Thank you for having us. I will endeavor to keep my comments short because I know that you have a very full agenda this evening. But given all of the challenges and changes that have occurred over the past 18 months. Certainly, our office and the board is no exception to some of those. So we thought it'd be a good time to take a moment and report some of the activities of our office and of the board. And I should mention that we do have with us online, the newly elected chair of the Code of Conduct Review Board. Uh, Robert Doucet and also, uh, the board's attorney, Robert White. Which, as I say that, I realize we have a trio of Roberts who are presenting for this segment. So in a moment, I'll ask Mr. Doucet if he has any comments, but I would just like to take a brief second to share my screen. And show you a PowerPoint presentation that I believe was included in your packets. So hopefully that's come up now. And as I mentioned, uh, the past 18 months, as we all know, have. Uh, presented a lot of challenges and we've had to do things differently. And one of the things that we've had to do differently certainly is move to more remote or virtual environments. But what that actually allowed us to do over the past, uh, several months was to really beef up and have a very robust training program. So we have mandatory training every two years for all public servants within the county. And we will operate on a two-year, this two fiscal year reporting cycle. So what this slide demonstrates is sort of the increase in numbers that we will able to get. With regards to our trainings, uh, by use of teams. And also other methods which we were using for, say, shift workers, many of the employees in our public safety divisions. Who it might not be as easy for them to attend a live session. So we have recorded sessions and so forth. So our numbers for this past reporting cycle reached 2,600, uh, employees. Now, keep in mind that there may be some duplications in there. And some people may have been trained and already left the county, but we try to maintain a very active role. With regards to training people about the code of conduct, about ethics and its importance in our roles as public servants. Uh, the current board is fairly well populated. We only have a couple of vacancies right now. And they do continue to meet quarterly, even when there is no sworn complaints or requests for advisory opinions and the like. So the number of sworn complaints has gone down with the pandemic. We didn't receive any in the past two fiscal years. But, uh, all the ones that we had previously have been resolved. However, we do still receive quite a few what I call inquiries and these come from departments, uh, directors, staff. Anytime someone has a question about whether or not something might implicate the code of conduct, uh, I think that's a good day. Because they're asking the questions and we can start having that conversation and engage in the dialogue. And hopefully place them on a path for, uh, proper conduct. I, I should mention that the, uh, public records portion that was formerly housed in our office. Moved in August of last year to the legal department's new upper unit. And so they have assumed those duties with regards to processing and completing requests. As well, the, uh, county labor board, which our office used to staff, uh, was dissolved back in July of last year. And so those, uh, complaints are now heard by the state, uh, labor board. One interesting data point that I thought I would point out to you all, uh, because another function of our office is to. Uh, do liquor license application hearings. And you can see in the prior fiscal years, um, the numbers stayed fairly. Steady and the very first half of the, of FY21, we had quite a few, some we were doing in person, some. Uh, via Teams and then the pandemic had, and we didn't really see any. Although I can tell you that we are now starting to see more of those applications. As well as more requests for special dispenser permits, uh, public celebration permits and so forth. So we're seeing some of that coming back into the county and into the economy. So that really was, uh, all of my presentation. I just wanted to give you some data points, some references for some of the activities. Within our office. And so I'm going to, uh, take us off of share screen for a moment. And I would invite, uh, Mr. Doucet, if he has any comments that he would like to make to you all, uh, to please feel free to do so now.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. I'll make it very brief. I know how busy you are. Um, all of us members on the board, where they are to serve the citizens of Bernalillo County. Hopefully you will be here for us, um, in the near future. And it's good to be back. I started my career at Bernalillo County. I've been gone for over a decade now and, uh, look to serve. And thank you, Commissioner Benson, for putting me on the board. Thank you all.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Benson has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kidd, for that, uh, report. Uh, it's, it's encouraging, especially seeing the, the new applications coming in. Um, and, uh, Mr. Doucet, congratulations on your new chair position. Uh, thank you for your prior service and, uh, it was long enough for me to, uh, reappoint you.
Commissioner Benson, my wife thought I was crazy. She said, this is how you want to serve. I said, sure, why not? So.
And, uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Benson, uh, I would, uh, echo those sentiments. We are very grateful for all of our members and, uh, Mr. Doucet, I think is going to provide some great leadership. And just, uh, as a side note, with regards to some of those, uh, special dispenser permits, I can tell you. That tomorrow I have one coming in because, uh, people are starting to have weddings again. And so, um. Uh, this particular vendor said that, uh, he's had brides who've been waiting over a year now. And so they are, are grateful that they can now have those, those great celebrations.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Robert Kidd and all the Roberts for all the work that you do in this area. We really appreciate you.
Thank you all for having us.
It looks like there's no other questions. So Julianne, how many people do we have signed up to speak for public comment, please?
Madam clerk, we've received one written comment that will be made part of the, uh, meeting record for this meeting. And then we have Mr. Bob Carroll, who would like to, uh, provide live public comment.
Okay, then I will go ahead and read the instructions, um, for public comment. You will have 90 seconds to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. You will then be muted and move to the waiting room. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments? You will have an opportunity to answer. So go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Bob Carroll. I'm a Bernalillo County resident. And I'm here to recommend that the Board of Commissioners require that its employees receive COVID shocks. There's no doubt that. Unvaccinated people are much more likely to get COVID than vaccinated people. Much more likely to get into the hospital and they're much more likely to spread the virus to members of the community. Who interact with commission employees. That's the, uh, lot of those comments. I, I'm, I was the one who gave the written comments. Uh, it's just a two-page or so, it's not too burdensome. But I think the way we need to look at this is, uh, COVID is just another shock. It's a shots that we have to take when we go to school. Uh, lots of shots to go to school. When I looked at that, there's shots that you have to take when you're in the military. And this is just one of those. This is just a shock that we take, uh, for the sake of the public health. To protect your team members at work, your family members and, you know, members of the community. Uh, I believe the vaccine mandate, uh, is more effective. It's, if it's more of a hard mandate. Uh, as opposed to a soft mandate. By a hard mi- mandate, I mean, you've got to either get vaccinated or take two COVID tests a week. Um, a soft mandate would be, you know, just trying to incentivize people. Uh, you guys, I understand, offer vacation days. So I, I, that's, uh, that's all I had to, that's my 90 seconds, I guess.
Okay, thank you so much. And all the commissioners did receive your written comments. So we appreciate that on this very important topic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Commissioner Barbola.
Yes, I just want to make sure that we had a response to Mr. Carroll. Um, and I, I wanted to say, I thank you so much. We should record you as a PSA. Um, and I think I just want, um, to say right that I feel, um, well-informed by our county manager. That we are taking this very serious as a county. Um, and unfortunately, it's a political thing as well and people still are, um. But I think we've done everything to make sure that the vaccine is accessible. And that we are, um, doing good work within the county to have a. Uh, workload that maybe is rotational and can keep folks safe. Um, and, and everything we can do to enforce it, including passing a resolution. Um, I know you're saying that a hard mandate, I just worry, um, for those folks within our county, the county employs a lot of people. Um, and that are hard pressed against it. My own son, who I try daily to get to take the vaccination. He's 26 years old and there's nothing I could do as a mom to make him do it, even though I, I really want him to get vaccinated. So I just, um, yes, I agree with you personally. And I just want to show you that I believe the county is doing everything we can to make sure it's accessible. And, um, that folks have access to taking. I just thank you for your comments and thank you for taking the time to be here with us.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, I, I do agree with him also. That's why I did put that resolution. Asking people and asking them to get their employees, uh, to get vaccinated. But I truly believe that if there's going to be a hard mandate, that that has to come. truly believe that if there's going to be a hard mandate, that that has to come from the state and federal level. I don't really believe that we're gonna really put any kind of dent by just mandating just Burnley County or just Burnley County employees. Um, you know, we've tried to set example many times for many different things. And the state still does what they want, and the federal government still does what they want. So uh, I'm with you. I want people to get vaccinated is our, it's our best bet in order for us to move forward. But you know, there's people that also have, you know, health issues. They don't have enough data. They may have be dealing with an autoimmune disease. There's, there's many types of things that people are dealing with that makes them fearful of getting a vaccine. And just like the other shots, you know, my kids were able to opt out of vaccines when they were kids. So not every kid has gotten a shot. I could tell you for a fact that my children did not get vaccinated and and had never had, but guess what? They did do the COVID vaccine because it is the one thing that we feel is important for this community to be able to move forward. So sometimes it's hard to make decisions for other people's health. But I think that if somebody's gonna have to do that, that has to happen at the state and federal level. That really what we would do would just be a drop in the bu- bucket of of if we're gonna, if something was gonna be mandated that it would have to be at that scale in order for it to really have an impact. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And you know, I I do know that the county manager, county legal, um, public safety, um Chief Perez, Richard Clark are really just continuing to look at this and to look at it from all sides. So I appreciate that. And um, I, Madam County Manager, I know you had asked employees to upload their vaccination cards or proof of vaccination. And that that first week, it was only twenty-eight percent. I I'll be honest, I still haven't done mine. I was vaccinated as soon as I could be, but I um, I just haven't uploaded my card. Do you know what, where we're at now in terms of how many people have shown proof of vaccination?
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, actually, there's um, we still, there's a lot of people that still need to upload their cards. I just uploaded mine yesterday. So um, I I believe, I'm just trying to think. I know I asked and I should have it in front of me. But if there's a, there's, we still need need quite a few people to um upload their their vaccination cards. And if I guess, I'm just gonna say of all the people that say they're they're vaccinated, probably half still need to um upload their their vaccination parts. Uh, Chief Pettis, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair, he uh he may have some more information.
Yeah, Chief.
Madam Chair Commissioners, we're just under a thousand that have uploaded their numbers into the system. But we are lagging and are working uh with the PIO to get out another campaign to push and encourage individuals to get that information uploaded.
Okay, yeah, and that that would be great and uh maybe somehow streamline the process to do that. I heard that it was a little bit difficult to do that. County Manager.
Oh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, so I did, I did get my answer. It's thirty-two percent of county employees have uploaded their vaccination card.
Can you talk a little bit about the incentives that are going along with um employee vaccinations?
Absolutely happy to. Um, uh, so what we're doing is we're offering employees uh two, basically two days off of two, two uh days of it of administrative leave if they do upload their vaccination card. So um, and actually, I've had a lot of um positive comments and um, I just want to say that it it was a really hard decision, but I have to put on my hat as a county manager and we have to make sure that um, people are coming to work and and people, you know, we want to keep people healthy. We're doing our part. We're um, you know, we're doing the social distancing. People are wearing masks. Um, we're also making sure that um, we keep our areas sanitized. That's really important. So and I do understand, you know, everyone's concern. Um, I I am vaccinated. My family is vaccinated. But um, as county manager, it's not pers- it can't be pers- a personal decision. It's what's best for the what's what's best for the the county as a whole. And so a lot of our public safety employees um had expressed um their concern and um there's and others as well. And I just, we just have to listen um to what their concerns are and respect that. But it's very, very, very difficult. And I truly understand everybody, whether we made the decision to mandate or not mandate, you know, there's um, an argument and and they're good arguments on either side. So we certainly, and I do want to say, we do respect it's a no disrespect to the medical profession. Um, I did hear a lot of comments on that. And we are so grateful for their, all their hard work. Um, and I can't, you know, I can't emphasize that more. So thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Yeah, yeah. And I I can appreciate giving the the paid time off, especially after that second shot. That second shot literally made me lay on the couch and watch movies and eat chocolate. So um, it's good. It's really good to have a a day off to just recover after that. And um and again, I think we're all in agreement that we do encourage everybody to get the vaccine. Okay, so thank you for that discussion and thank you, Bob Carroll, for bringing that up. And so moving on to approval of minutes. I'll move to approve the August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one special administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Come on, somebody. Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Um, all in favor, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barbola.
Aye.
Mr. Vincent.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So that passes unanimously. And then the minutes of the September fourteen, twenty-twenty-one administrative meeting, I will move to approve those meeting minutes. We'd like to second. Thank you, Commissioner Benson. All in favor? And Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Barbola.
Aye.
Commissioner Vincent.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So that passes unanimously. Thank you. Now on to approval of consent agenda. And let's see, Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers? Oh, just for eight A.
Yes, ma'am. Eight A, one, is FR twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-three.
Thank you very much. I will move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barbola.
Aye.
Mr. Vincent.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So that consent agenda passes unanimously. Now on to adoption of ordinance amendment to county code. This is introduction of fire department structure revision presented by Chief Perez.
Um, Chair and Commissioners, good evening. So the item that is before you this evening is section thirty-four of the county code. This section has not been touched since two thousand and two and was long overdue for uh uh an update. So what we are looking to update is just a few items. One is to actually put into our name officially what it is that we do, and that is fire and rescue. So you will see in there that we refer now to ourselves in the new code as Burnley County Fire and Rescue. I will note that we have no plans to change our name on the outward facing. We will remain Burnley County Fire Department, BCFD. But uh officially, we felt it was important to have the fire and rescue placed inside of the the code itself. So that's the the biggest biggest item that you'll see there. Another item in there is a removal of language speaking to a volunteer or a joint department or combo department. We haven't hired a volunteer since two thousand and seven, and our last official volunteer left the county in two thousand and eleven. So we went through and removed that portion out of the the document. And the last piece in there was uh creating some uh consistency in how the fire chief was referred to in the in the document itself. And uh making sure that it's in there as the fire chief. And those are the changes, very minor, but long, long overdue. I stand for any questions.
Great. Thank you so much for for explaining that, what the changes would be. Are there any questions? Okay, um, I'll go ahead and move to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Casada, seconds, thank you. So all in favor? And thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barbola.
Aye.
Commissioner Vincent.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Um, next up, adoption of resolution. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution, resolution numbers?
Yes, ma'am. Ten A. Ten A is AR twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-four. Ten B is AR twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-five.
Okay.
Did you want to move move on to item C, D, and E?
Yeah, sure.
If you wanted to run down the whole list and we'll.
Okay. Ten C is FR twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-six. Ten D is AR twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-seven. Ten E is FR twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-eight.
Okay, that covers it. So um, back up to, oh, Rio Grande Credit Union serving Burnley County employees. Um, this is, well, why don't you take it away, Vice Chair Casada, and tell us what this is?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, well, we've we've gone over it a couple of times and we've gone back and forth. I I I'm hoping everybody got the um supporting documents for us to go ahead and just put Rio Grande Credit Union, since it's already been a part of what we've done initially. Uh, when they started and us becoming a part of that. Um, and um, I think it it's pretty straightforward. Um, I do, I do though, um I do have an amendment, though. Um, and if I can um uh find out where I uh um, I wrote down the amendment, that would probably be better. Um, so um, I would like to amend uh in this document uh that uh I would add the line uh in the resolution that uh Rio Grande Credit Union be allowed to present at any HR benefit event. So that means that it's not only just for new employees, but whenever they do a benefit event that they could reach out to existing employees. I just didn't feel that we should just talk to new employees about you know, uh, how they uh have opportunities to be with this financial institution, but that every employee uh in Burnley County could have that. So I don't know if we if we can vote on the amendment and then vote on the resolution itself.
Madam um Chair, Vice Chair Casada, if we can vote on the amendment, um, vote on the entire resolution as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question first? Um, this is actually a question, I think, for legal. Um, does this in any way bump bump up against anti-donation to just have one credit union, or would this allow other credit unions to present their materials?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and uh Vice Chair. I want to thank the Vice Chair for working with us. We went from the process of of this as it was originally drafted, then perhaps went through an RFP process and then got to where it's at. And what this does is does not create an exclusive franchise. It's recognizing the relationship, of course, by going way back in history between the county employees and the Rio Grande Credit Union, but it's not exclusive, as you know. So what I would suggest and I think the Vice Chair knows this and you do as well, Madam Chair, that if other folks would like to make a like presentation at the like event, they would also be invited in, you know, depending on size and notice and all. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I know I remember, you know, in our previous meetings, I remember our treasurer, Nancy Burst talked a lot about the history of Rio Grande Credit Union, um, what a rich history it has with Burnley County employees. Um, and I know that there's other really good credit unions um in our county. So I I just wanted to to just get some legal clarity on that. So thank you.
You know, Madam Chair, um, you know, and and really, you know, there's a, there is great other credit unions, ones that, uh, you know, service educators and they work with Albuquerque Public Schools. And no other credit union goes through Albuquerque Public Schools, but that particular Nucenda. Um, you know, so I don't see how, what we're doing any different than what maybe APS is doing. These are, this is for government employees. That's what it was created to do. Um, and 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 I'm just not aware of any other credit union that does that. So I don't really see that as any conflict going down the road, right? Because it wouldn't make sense to let Nucenda come in and pitch. Uh, because that's not who their clientele, that was not their charter. That's not what they developed this bank to to serve. Um, they all serve individual, you know, it's like USAA. I don't know if you've seen the commercials for USAA. But they're funny because they say, well, I want to join USAA. And they go, are you a veteran? Or anybody in your family a veteran? They go, no. Well, then you cannot join USAA. Uh, so it's basically the same thing. We're just wanting to make sure that, you know, we are just providing that for employees and new employees. It's not to disenfranchise any other credit union or or to say one's better than the other, because they're not, they're all great. Um, but we're just wanting to make sure that that is part of our uh HR and our our new employee, you know? And and that if we do an event for existing employees, when we're talking about what, you know, Burnley County has to offer, it'd be nice, but they could also be there and say, hey, this is what we offer to you as an employee of Burnley County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I know you had also mentioned that part of your vision is to do financial literacy classes and um, things like that to really help people manage their money. So I think we all agree that that's really important. Um, I see Treasurer Burst has her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Can you hear me? I'm at another event.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, yes, and and I stand in support of this. Uh, we did get those uh nineteen seventy-one documents from the credit union that recognized that relationship between county employees and the credit union. I think um the other thing I wanted to add, kind of along the same line as Commissioner Casada said, was what's special about Rio Grande is that not only do they focus on local government employees, but also their board has a county employee on and serving on that board. So we have, you know, definite input into the credit union. And uh, that's, that's a pretty unique relationship that uh we can't say any other credit union has. So thank you very much. And if there's anything I can ask or I can add, if you have questions, I'll stay on the line. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Um, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that uh credit unions are no longer required to only serve their um their field of membership. They they can, a lot of them have uh community charters. Um I think Rio Grande is a great credit union. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in in terms of options. Um, I see no reason to have another one presented. I just want to make sure that there's no uh miscommunication there. So like, a county employee could join. So like, a county employee could join, as far as I know, any other credit union in town. There may be some smaller ones that that say, no, you gotta be a, you know, an employee at this one place, or a a union member, or, you know, something like that, but of having worked for credit unions for about fifteen years, um, I can't speak highly enough about them, um, but just want to make sure it's clear. The other thing I do want to say, I think it's a great idea to have it as a, it's a benefit. Credit union membership is a benefit to employees, and and they provide outreach to employers and come for free. There's no cost to employers, there's no cost for employees. Um, and they receive financial education. Financial education is the best education anybody can get. It is. And then uh, next to that, logic. If our schools taught financial education and logic, man, it would turn around the whole education system. But um, but if we can provide that to our uh, students, I'm sorry, our employees, um, I'll support that all day long.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Um, Vice Chair Casada, would you like to?
So yes, thank you, Madam. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to first move for approval of the amendment.
Second. So, we we need a roll call vote for the amendment?
Mr. Barboia.
Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice.
I'd like to move for approval of item ten A.
I think Commissioner Barboia got her hand up first to second. So, all in favor? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye. So that passes unanimously with the amendment passed unanimously. So, so, yeah, we got that taken care of. Thank you. Um, and I I appreciate all the time and input over a few different meetings to kind of clarify what this is and why it's important. So, thank you. Okay, next up. County Clerk, it's your office. Adjusting precinct outer boundaries, consolidating precincts, and creating new precincts in Bernalillo County. Jamie Diaz will present.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, on behalf of Linda Stover, our County Clerk, thank you for letting us uh, present this item. As you know, uh, we presented the item uh, last meeting. It was deferred. We do have, I I, we did send a map book to all the Commissioners. We hope that uh, that clarified any any uh, questions uh, that any Commissioner may have had. Uh, we do want to make something very clear. As the Office of the County Clerk, we do not take part uh, in any any method or any process of reapportionment or redistricting of any um, districted office within the county. Those district offices are from County Commission, City Council, APS District, CNM, et cetera. So, we maintain precinct boundaries for the County Commission. And in maintaining precinct boundaries, the clerk traditionally does this work for the Commission. And there's one major reason why we do that, is because the clerk is by statute required to precinct a voter when a voter registers to vote. So, a precinct for that voter is a geographical point in our county that has a boundary around it and has a precinct number, like Precinct One. That precinct is attached to every districted office for representation. So when that person goes to vote in Precinct One, they're getting their correct United States Congress District, uh, state, state House Member, State Senator, County Commission, APS Board Member, CNM Board Member, et cetera. So, the work that we have put in front of you is a maintenance of our base precinct map, uh, which you, which everybody sees now. Um, and what we're doing is we're dividing precincts based on the criteria set forth in um, the state law, one dash three dash one. And we're also adjusting outer boundaries, and I talked about these outer boundaries in the last meeting. Uh, we have several boundaries that cross the freeway, for example, across I forty. The majority of the precinct is on the south side and a small piece on the north side. Same with I twenty-five and other major um, thoroughfares like. So, those outer boundaries are being adjusted to compact that precinct, not for any other reason other than making that precinct more viable to the people that live in it. So they're not having to cross a major uh, freeway to see the other piece of their precinct. So, the original outer boundaries of the precincts that we're changing are not changing. We're just dividing and creating new one within it. The outer boundaries, definitely, we are changing those outer boundaries for those reasons. Our office works very closely with research and polling and the Secretary of State's office in doing this. Um, and so everything is calculated based off the criteria set out in the state law. Um, I can go over that criteria if you if you want me to, Madam Chair. Um, uh, but I'd stand for any questions at this point.
Thanks. Are there any questions? Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, actually, I don't have a question. I just want to thank Mr. Diaz and um, Madam Clerk Stover. You've got a great staff. Uh, I was a little uneasy um, last meeting, and thank you, Madam Chair, for moving the the vote to this month. Um, I just want to make sure we do it right, and uh, Mr. Diaz and and Mr. Martinez came to my office and reviewed the information, and um, I was impressed with their command of and their understanding of the the process, and uh, yeah, I took very advantage of it. So, well done. All due, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll second that. Um, I I agree. I I had the the good fortune of starting my term in twenty nineteen, so well before the pandemic, and so the first, one of the first meetings I had was with this team, Jamie Diaz and other people in the Clerk's office, and they spread out maps and they showed me, you know, just like, why precincts, boundaries are being moved, and it it made so much sense to sit down with these people, and they're so smart and they were able to explain exactly what was going on and that that there was nothing shady going on. So, I was actually, I was happy last time at that last meeting when, you know, you, Commissioner Benson, and others had questions about this, because I really wanted everybody to, you know, get that presentation and really understand it before you um, went to actually vote on it. So, I'm I'm really happy how this all turned out in that we had the extra time to, you know, for people's questions to be answered. Are there any questions tonight for for Jamie Diaz? Or would anybody like to make a motion? Okay, I saw Commissioner Casada's hand go up first. You move for approval. I saw Commissioner, oh, you've you've got the Commissioner Benson's got the two seconds, so.
Yes.
Um, all in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia. Mr. Benson. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
I do want to say real quick, you guys got the two smartest people there is on this job, and that's Jamie and Ken. So they know what they're doing.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So that passes unanimously. So, moving on to Community Connection Supportive Housing Expansion. Margarita Chavez Sanchez to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good afternoon, good evening. Um, this item is for our Community Connection Supportive Housing Program. This this initiative has been in place as a function of the Behavioral Health Initiative for just about five years now. Um, and as you can imagine, uh, over that period of time, we've housed up a number of folks, and we've housed up to the maximum of the current allocated funding. Um, with that being said, our waiting list for folks needing scattered site supportive housing is about seven hundred clients deep. The need is huge, right? The need is huge in housing. We know that. We we've had the conversation in a number of different spectrums. So this item actually came to the Commission on April sixth, now of twenty twenty-one. This new item is officially appropriating the funding. So that item that came through on April sixth was the Behavioral Health Initiative uh, proposal that went through our subcommittee process, ABCGC, BCC approval, um, but it didn't include um, the FAF, our Fiscal Analysis Forum, and the official um, appropriation of the funding. So this is attaching the funding to the proposal that was already approved. Um, this is an increase to the project of one million dollars annually. That will be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for um, vouchers and then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for um, behavioral health supports um, for that program. So Commissioner, with your permission, I'll stand for questions.
Absolutely. Any questions, comments on this? Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you. Thank you, Margarita Director, Margarita Chavez Sanchez. I um, I guess I've, my question is, um, yay for moving some housing. I know it's a critical need. And I think I've heard, and I maybe would, if you or others have an analysis around like, how much is is there available housing? Like, if people get vouchers, are they going to be able to find a place?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, uh, this has always been a difficult um, question to answer, and with COVID, it's even more difficult. Um, we actually had a recent conversation with Betty um, from County Housing, and that conversation around uh, is is it was even around the fluctuation of the fair market value for rent. Um, and so, just really thinking about that related, uh, but in a separate subject, we, as you know, have a motel voucher program for folks that are coming out of the RRC, and because the upcoming balloon fiesta, the the motel voucher is double the cost it normally would be. Um, but again, uh, to answer your question, we are um, still being able to place people. It is more difficult than it's ever been, but we are um, being able to place people. Um, in that conversation with Betty and Leonette, the team from Housing, there was a conversation that started about ways that we can potentially incentivize landlords um, to uh, be welcome to these type of vouchers. So that conversation is beginning to happen, and I think there's a high likelihood that we'll come back to you all with some of those conversations and and potential proposed solutions to to really make more housing available, um, a lot to align with the amount of vouchers.
Thank you. And if I may, another fellow of Madam Chair, um, the so as like, if you can just let me know the process a little bit. I know this is under the your Behavioral Health Department, but it sounds like we're working in coordination with housing. So someone, this money becomes available. Is it housing that will distribute these vouchers? Or when you say the seven hundred waiting list, is that through the already housing department, or is it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, you are correct. This is a partnership with Bernalillo County Housing. Um, when this project came over to the Department of Behavioral Health from the jail, it was actually operated out of MDC originally, and it came over to us. We realized quickly that we are not housing experts, um, and we reached out to Betty to support us. So Betty and her team actually um, oversee and issue the vouchers in the program. They receive the applications, they maintain the waiting list, they ensure that we stay in line with all the um, fair market, um, fair housing regulations, um, as it pertains to these vouchers. And then on our side, we contract with the Behavioral Health Service Provider that's paired with the client who receives the voucher. So one client receives a voucher, and then we pair them with a case manager to make sure they have those supports.
Thank you, Director Chavez Sanchez and Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Well, then, in that case, I I am honored to uh, move for approval on this, on something that is so very necessary at this time. Is there a second? Commissioner Barboia, thank you for the second, and all in favor? And thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And moving on, Economic Development, Mission Achievement and Success, the Mas Education Foundation, Inc., and Charter School. Mayling or Marcos to present?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the Authorization, the TEFRA Public Hearing under Section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code relating to the issuance of the Arizona Industrial Development Authority of up to fifty-five million of revenue bonds for the purpose of funding or reimbursing amounts used to finance improvements to and equipment for school facilities for Mission Achievement and Success Charter. I will stand for questions.
Okay, and it says, conduct a public hearing. Julianne, is there anybody here for public hearing?
Madam Chair, no, nobody's signed up.
Okay, okay. Um, are there any questions, comments for Mayling? Commissioner Barboia.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and maybe, and I just, so the public hearing actually already happened.
Right.
Yeah, it was on uh, Thursday or something like that. Um, and yeah, thanks for setting that up. I'm excited, you know, um, MAS, they don't go by Mas. They, it's been clearly stated that they are MAS. Um, Mission achievement school has been very successful, and I actually, it is in an old building that I grew up near, and um, and um, right around the corner from my house, the Yale, the Yale one, and they also have a west side. Um, and I just wanted to comment right that, while um, they have been like so successful, they have like a hundred percent graduation, hundred percent of their folks are either going, you know, getting admitted to college or enrolling in the military with about ten percent being military. I saw some presentations, and I think they're just doing an excellent job. Um, so I wanted to say that. And um, if you all, I know as County Commissioners, we regularly receive emails about about the Yale campus and some of the traffic concerns, and I know City Councilor Davis has put some efforts in to request that, and those are not related to this current request um, for this public hearing, so we're not out couldn't, um, you know, um, connecting any of our county funds to this. This is just a public, the option for a public hearing so that they can um, hopefully get those funds from another entity in Arizona, not us. Um, but I did just want to say, you know, as the County Commission receives a bunch of these um, you know, information about traffic, my back, my alleyway is actually the alleyway they use that you hear a lot about in your emails. And um, you know, I I, um, I don't have any school age children anymore, but I see my neighbors and my my, all my neighbors. I told you guys many times, I've lived in this house my whole entire life, so um, you know, many of my neighbors I've known since I was a kid myself. And you know, it is a nuisance. I think that it's a bigger problem that the Public Education Department and whoever has authority over charter schools really needs to make sure that like, that the parking and traffic and all that kind of stuff is planned. Their formula is really hard for them. I've been on a board of a charter school, and so the goal to make enough money to survive is to like, increase your population. Um, and that always causes problems in neighborhoods, so we're not the first. Um, but I do hope that there can be some resolution, and I'm I'm also grateful for a school in my neighborhood rather than a motel or a brewery or something, but um, I think there are real concerns as well. So, just want to mention all that. Glad that this is moving forward and that the public hearing happened and that we could be a part of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and um, I also, you know, sat on the and was the president of the of the Papa, which is a public academy of performing arts. I think everybody knows that I went from there and became a school board member at Albuquerque Public Schools. And one of the reasons why I did that was to fight for kids' school choice, so that kids have alternative choice. so that kids have alternative choices in education. And I think Commissioner Barboah hit it right on the head. I had to hire a new principal. But when you talk about a principal of a charter school, they're actually the superintendent. And so it's a bigger job than just being a principal and hiring teachers. You have to know about grant writing and raising funds and money. And she's completely right, you know. APS has a budget where they can always, you know, be looking at it, improving their infrastructure for the safety of kids. And charter schools do not have that within their budget. And I, and I'm not quite sure what this, who authorized this charter. There's two ways to authorize a charter. One is through APS and then one is through the state of New Mexico. And I found that the ones that are authorized through the state of New Mexico don't have any oversight. They have, they just authorize them and never look back. APS does not do that to their charter schools. They offer a lot of support when they authorize charter schools. But I know that through the charter schools that I've been involved with, there's only a maximum of 300 kids, Commissioner Barboah. So they only have that pot of money to work with and that is it. So with that being said, that's why I totally support this.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Or would one of you like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay. And Commissioner Casada, second. So all in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now moving on, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Recovery Plan, Shirley Reagan to present.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, Commissioners. You've seen this agenda item before. Wanted first, thank you for participating in two public work sessions on the budget for this. Thank you County Manager Baca for all of your support and all of the county employees that have been working on this. Burnaleo County was identified as an eligible local government to receive $131.9 million in a direct, in direct aid to combat the COVID-19 pandemic from the U.S. Department of Treasury. We received half of that funding back in May of '21. That was $65.9 million. Tonight, we are coming to you, one, to approve the Burnaleo County Recovery Plan, which describes what, how we're going to be spending the money. Also, to approve a financial resolution to budget the second tranche of the ARPA funding in the amount of $65.9 million that we will actually receive in May of 2022. The third motion is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Burnaleo County and the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Water Utility Authority to provide ARPA funding in the amount not to exceed $53,816,573 to design, build, rehabilitate, and improve water and sewer initiatives for underserved communities within the county and improve access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. And also to authorize the county manager to execute subsequent agreements and amendments with the Albuquerque Water Utility Authority for seven projects identified in the MOU for the water and sewer projects approved by the Board of County Commissioners under ARPA. I stand for any questions.
Okay. First, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's any questions because Shirley, I know you made a point to always be available to the commissioners and, you know, you and various staff holding meetings with us, multiple meetings with us to show us line by line what was, what's in that plan. So I appreciate you. And are there any questions at this point from the commissioners? Commissioner Casada.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have any questions. I just have a comment, you know, that this is hugely important when we're talking about water. I'm sure we all drive by the real grand now. And, and look, we have to be realistic about who's responsible for water. And that's all of us. And that's just not my, just not my district. But the, the whole complete Burnaleo County is responsible for how we use and what kind of infrastructure goes in place for reuse and, and the game plan that we have through the Water Utility Authority on how best practices will and big infrastructure projects will help us achieve a goal to get us through this drought period, which we know could last up to three to four years. And, and so this is hugely important. And I'd like to thank, you know, County Manager Julie Morgesbaka and staff, all staff who've been involved and really working with the Water Utility Authority and looking at what priority projects will actually make a huge difference in how we use and conserve the water here in the great county of Burnaleo County. So I just want to appreciate the work that everybody has done. And I think it's going to make a huge impact to this community.
Thanks for those comments. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Casada, you moved to approve, I assume. Is, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
So proud. And that passes unanimously. And thanks again, Shirley and, and County Manager Julie, everybody who has done such hard work on this. Thank you. Next up, we're going back to Margarita Chavez Sanchez to talk about the Forensic Assertive Community Treatment Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an exciting project. This will be a collaboration with the city of Albuquerque for fact teams or forensic assertive community treatment teams. Right now, the community is currently served by a number of act teams or assertive community treatment teams. And this allows us to add a forensic component to that service provision. This has been an ask from the community for many years and a gap in the system for many years. And through the collaboration with the city of Albuquerque, we're able to bring this to clients with the forensic component, engagement with the criminal justice system, additional resources, additional services that are tailored to their needs. This item requests a one-time allocation of $300,000 and recurring allocation in the amount of $300,000 for these teams. The total cost for these teams right now is predicted at about $900,000 a year. The city of Albuquerque will be contributing $600,000 to this project. They have that money available because they were originally funding an act team that they are now converting to a fact team. So with our support and additional dollars, we'll be able to make that happen. So again, this is exciting news. This is something that's kind of routed through the committee process. And we're excited to bring this to the community. So with that, I will stand for any questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, are there any questions? Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Margarita, can you tell me the, just to clarify, the city is contributing $600,000 in recurring dollars? As well as the $600,001 one-time?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, the city has the recurring dollars and not the one-time dollars. So these one-time dollars are only contributed by the county, but the reoccurring dollars of, in the amount of $600,000 is coming from the city. That $300,000 one-time dollars is essentially for startup, right? So that's going to be, you know, laptops and all of the equipment that will be needed for that project. I do want to mention one thing that I left out is that both of these amounts are up to amounts, right? So if a total of $300,000 in one-time funds is not needed, the full 300 would not be spent and those dollars would return back to the Behavioral Health Fund. Same thing for the reoccurring dollars. We are meeting with the state of New Mexico to ensure that we maximize Medicaid billing for fact teams. Right now, it's not eligible for Medicaid billing, but act teams are. So as long as we work with them to redefine a fact to be inclusive in what's being billed for an act, then the provider that the city will contract with for this service will be able to bill Medicaid for the max amount that they can for the service. And then again, that full amount will come, or the unused amount will come back into the Behavioral Health Fund.
Okay, thank you. And can you, just for our benefit, can you explain what adding their forensic component does to act?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Mr. Chair Commissioner Benson, thank you. So what we know right now with the act model is that it's followed to a national fidelity is that it really serves our clients in the community that have the highest need. An act team really creates a team effort where we wrap around a client and provide them supports. It's direct engagement with, with peer case management, prescribing providers, clinicians that are really tailored and focused on that client. Act teams can carry a client on their caseload for many, many years. And so it helps them to be successful. The fact component adds a forensic space for folks to help, to help them navigate the criminal justice system. So if you think about one of these high acute clients that's needing a lot of support, prescription monitoring and case management, and now you say, figure out how to navigate the fact that you've been in and out of the criminal justice system, figure out how to navigate the fact that you have warrants on your, on your record or charges that you need to, to address. And the act teams are not always equipped to be able to understand how to help that client through that process. So this adds a forensic, forensic liaisons essentially, who can help the client navigate that criminal justice system, work with the courts, work with their public defender, and really advocate on their behalf to reduce recidivism in that criminal justice system and connect to care as opposed to coming in and out of MDC and really engaging with the courts in that way.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. So, so can I sum up that it will help our, our residents in Burnaleo County, those who have been incarcerated, come out of jail, stay out of jail, stay out of trouble, become contributing members of society, and make our county a better place?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, I think that's a great summary, right? I think that that is absolutely the goal of the program. And, and we recognize that just assigning someone to a fact team is not a silver bullet, right? Where it's not a snap your fingers and we think that, that everything will come, you know, full circle. But it is now providing resources that folks have not always had the availability to access and someone to really work with them to get them employed, to get them, you know, to a space that, you know, they don't have a warrant because they had no way to access transportation to get to their hearing, right? To really kind of decrease the burden on the criminal justice system and really work towards success.
Thank you. Commissioner Barboah.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Chavez Sanchez. Again, I, well, a couple of things. First, my biggest statement that I want to say out loud, mostly for all of us in the public, right, is that I think we continue to have some significant resources and we're still really mostly capturing folks after they've either been arrested or through the court system. And I don't, you know, I'm not trying to pretend like I have all the answers to it, but I do think we can, yeah, that there are many folks that we could be creative to getting to that before they get there. I do want to note for this in particular, I'm glad, I hope, I think this is what everyone has been saying, right? Is that there are a few players that really are the ones that boggle up the emergency room or boggle up the care and because they do have those like multi-disorders or multiple factors that contribute and that they're really, even recently when we were working through and thank you to all the folks that were trying to figure out some funding for Adobe, right? But that those, those, even in that conversation, the reason why we're, why some of the process that we ask for includes to identify the individual and that, that is some of the, because I was told, right, that once we identify the folks, then we can get that small number of players that hopefully this fact team could truly, you know, we can know who they are, we can get to them, we can hopefully keep them engaged in services because of course it's their opportunity to not or to be engaged. And that's the difficult part for, that has to be, you know, acknowledged. But that, that then they can hopefully truly, you know, help some of those, those back ends in the, in the jail, in the hospitals. And so I guess I both, like, I want to believe we're doing the right thing and that these will pay off in the future. And I think to Commissioner Benson's point, I just bring these up because I think how we have and how this commission sees regular evaluation of like what we measure to be, like if we are all at the same time saying that it's a small amount of players that do this and this, you know, money plus a lot of resources go to specifically trying to identify. And I guess I just would like to, you know, sort of regularly see or think about, how are we evaluating that? And if people aren't, you know, because it's also their choice. So at the end of the day, if they're just not, you know, engaging and we have the service available, but they're not engaging and it continues to be this, what, what folks are saying is this smaller population of folks that are bundling up, then I guess I just want to be able to call it and shift and move resources as needed or, or rethink programming as needed. And yeah, so I guess I'm just asking, agree with the services. I think it's what everyone, what folks are saying is the problem. And if we're addressing it with resources, great. And if not, I'd like to know, like, yeah, where, what and how are we evaluating and making those kinds of shifts if necessary?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I think you, you hit all, you gave me like the great elevator speech of kind of all of the pieces that we really believe are important. As I mentioned, this is a collaboration with the city and the city will be issuing the RFP to the provider for this service. And so we will be working closely with the city to make sure that there is evaluation and reporting that we can review, just like any and all of our programs. Why, we don't want to just fund a program into eternity because it sounds great, right? We want to make sure that we have meaningful data, meaningful evaluations to make sure that it's successful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I just want to say thank you, Margarita, for explaining that. Oh, Commissioner Barboah, did you have something else?
I was just saying, thank you, Dr. Chavez Sanchez and Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining this. And really, I, you're really talking about what fact is and what forensic is because I'm not sure that just people in the general public know what this program does and who it serves. But I think the collaboration with the city of Albuquerque and, you know, really meeting the needs of people who have, who are going through the criminal justice system, who have mental health issues or behavioral health issues, and really helping them find, you know, treatment and solutions and a way forward. I think this is really what the community has been looking for and asking for. And I think that, you know, this is just that it's, it's one piece of the solution, but it's a really important piece. So, so I'll go ahead and move to approve this one. Is there a second? It looks like the baby is going to second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor? And Madam Clerk, please, thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboah.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Margarita, you're on a roll. So why don't you take the next one, Care Campus Services Expansion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is our last item for the night. So thank you for bearing with me tonight. This is an agenda item that has been a long time coming. We first began mentioning this expansion about three years ago. And there's been a couple of items that have come before the commission over the course of the last couple of years for our, our expansion. As you all know, we have rebound, rebalanced. of years for our, our expansion. As you all know, we have rebound, rebranded, are no longer the MATS campus and no longer just a provider of substance-based services, but expanding to comprehensive behavioral health care. And in that, we launched our Crisis Triage Center, our Crisis Stabilization Unit. And now we're getting ready and excited to open a outpatient behavioral health clinic and a living room model. Right now, if you called your physical health provider to get in because you had a sore throat, they might say, sure, we'll see you in a week, maybe, right? But if you try to get in to see a behavioral health provider, it's more going to look like ninety to a hundred and twenty days, right? The need to, and, and the availability to access outpatient behavioral health services is so high right now. We're in a provider desert. We're in an access desert for those outpatient services. And so this unit, this outpatient behavioral health unit allows us to do that. The plan in this outpatient behavioral health unit is to schedule appointments for half of the time during the day and the second half of the day to allow for walk-in treatments. And so we know that this is a need in the community for people to literally walk in and access outpatient behavioral health services. This clinic will provide a wide array of services. One will be through a contracted medical provider, psychiatric nurse practitioners who can prescribe both Suboxone and anti, antipsychotic meds or psychotropic long-acting injectables out of an existing, the pharmacy license that we will apply for in this outpatient clinic. And we, as a Department of Behavioral Health Services, will be hiring clinical counselors to provide individual and group counseling in this space as well. So this will be a blend of a therapeutic model and a clinical model to meet clients where they are if they're needing behavioral health intervention from a medical prescribing provider. They can have immediate access to that. If they're needing counseling and therapy, they can have immediate access to that. Right across the hall will be our living room model, and that will be almost like a drop-in location that people can drop in and access peer-based services. So for people who are, who feel threatened by the medical model or the clinical model, or maybe they've had bad experiences at psychiatric emergency, they can come to this living room model and meet with a peer. That peer can help them get an appointment. That peer can just talk through them, talk with them through an issue, can help them write a resume, can help them apply for jobs, can help them connect to services. The wide array of peer services that are provided in our community and what a peer can do is just phenomenal. And so this is another way that the county is really supporting peers in their journey of recovery, both along those who are recovering. Again, we're, we're in National Recovery Month, so it's, it's a great time to talk about this. Those who are navigating recovery on the substance use disorder side, and those who are navigating recovery on the mental health side. So we will be back to commission at the next meeting for official, their official request for these new positions. Again, those will be peers and counselors. And then the bulk of the dollars in this agenda item will be to contract for a medical provider and to cover those medical-based costs. That medical provider will bill Medicaid. So this again is an up-to amount in order for us to understand exactly what that budget is. There is not a clinic here in Burnaleo County that has that type of blended model. So it's very difficult for us to really understand what that total operating budget will be. So again, when we start billing Medicaid, we'll have a greater understanding of what that looks like and have the ability to potentially bring dollars back to the behavioral health initiative. So with that, Commissioner, I will stand for questions.
Are there any questions? I am not seeing any questions. I just want to make a comment. I think the, the Care Campus is so amazing in its range of services. And I think until a person has a tour of the entire campus, they don't know what all goes on in there. But it is so impressive. And so I will, I will move to approve this. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Aye.
Mr. Vincent.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Discussion item twelve A is deferred to the October twelfth meeting. And so on October twelfth, Tuesday, October twelfth, we'll have the zoning meeting at three PM, followed by the administrative meeting at five PM. These are both on Zoom. And if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Take care of yourselves. Stay warm.